Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We are gonna have our invocation by Reverend James E. Harris, Pastor Dixon Grove Baptist Church. It will be followed up by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me. Let us bow forward in prayer. Oh God, I hope in ages past, I hope for years to come. I'll shelter beneath thy stormy bless, I shall home under the shadow of thy throne, still may we dwell secure. Sufficiency is thy arms alone, I'll be physical. Oh God, thank you tonight for this occasion. Thank you to God, thank you so much, oh God, help us, bless us, keep us in your care. We thank you for this time of coming together to discuss your truth, God, because we know that we're living in dangerous times. Sad times and hectic times, but Lord, through it all, we learn how to trust in you. You told us to trust in you with all our heart and lean not unto thine own understanding in all thy ways. You told us to acknowledge you, and you would that wreck our paths. Thank you, God, for this beautiful occasion. Thank you for this county, Clayton County. Clayton County, we love this county, God. We've been ministering here for a number of years, God, but we thank you most of all for governing bodies that have been working for a while. This commission, this body here, Lord. Bless these commissioners, as they've been working for many years, ups and downs and rounds about, Lord, but through it all, they're still working for you. Bless our commissioners, one by one and name by name. God, please look on our chairman, brother, Dr. Jeffrey Turner, been laboring for a while. God, give him wisdom. Give him knowledge and power to lead this county to higher heights. Lord, we need better jails, we need better fire department, we need better roads, we need a lot of things, God, but through it all, we will reach that goal. We give you all the honor for these people who've come to share and let us, God, even though sometimes we disagree, but let us, help us to disagree agreeably. Because, Lord, it's all about you and not about us. Keep us in your care. Again, God, bless us, help us to do what you call us to do, not, we can't have our way all the time, but have thine way, Lord, have thine own way. God, we are the part of you that clay. Mole us, show us, help us to do what you call us to do. In the precious name of Jesus, let us all say praise God.
Praise God.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everyone and welcome to the November 21st, 2017 regular business meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I have a couple of items that need to be removed. The first one is the discussion item on page six, number 10, building inspection services outsourcing, is a discussion item. Make the motion to remove it. Is there a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, is unanimous.
Can, can, I'm sorry. Is this a time that I can pull F and G away from the consent agenda as a separate item?
We'll cover that in just a minute. This is from the original, the regular agenda. I have a second motion to make in reference to the zoning petition. Items on page seven, item 19 and 20. At the request of the applicant, they are asking to pull this until the next zoning hearing. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing non, may we have your motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
And that's just to reiterate, items 19 and 20 are the zoning petitions. The applicant was Stephen Venture on behalf of Mount Zion Joint Venture LP. Those two zoning petitions have been removed.
Just separate.
The board will now hear two presentations this evening. The first is an update on the Clayton County Development Authority as presented by Mr. Ricky Clark, Jr., the city manager of Jonesboro, Georgia.
Mr. Ricky Lamar Clark, Jr., please.
Mr. Chairman, that is Lamar Clark, Jr. To our chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. It is my pleasure to stand before you to provide an update on the Clayton County Development Authority and what we as a board have been able to accomplish over the past six months. I would be remiss if I did not say, upon my appointment to the city of Jonesboro, I knew that there was no other place that I could live than Clayton County, being that I was here. So while I'm here, I'm honored to have the privilege to serve the county in this capacity. So I've been told that I have a time limit of 30 minutes, so I will use all of my 30 minutes.
We're secure. Well, like this, that means time, you know. You know what to do, you know what to do.
Nonetheless, this presentation is just one of the ways that we as a board have agreed to ensure that our public is able to participate in all that we are doing, because without economic development, there is no county. I stand before you to introduce the, or to at least sound off the members of the board. All new members, with the exception of Mr. Eldrin Bell, Michael Edmondson, Chair, Eldrin Bell, Vice Chair, Ricky L. Clark, Jr., Treasurer, Dr. Don McMillan, Dr. Leica Anderson, and Dr. Gil Rainin. There still remains one vacancy. So as we move into this year, most of us took the seat on the authority within June. In July, we lost the Economic Development Director for the county. However, as a board, we understood that work did not stop. Work had to continue because the county continued to move. So just to articulate for you some of the items that we have done thus far. We have approved the bond issuance of Low Temp Industries, a $17.5 million expansion project. We had our fiscal year '16 audit approved with no negative management points and a clean audit opinion. In addition, we changed the meeting date of our Development Authority meetings to the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00. And I encourage all of you to attend those meetings, as it has been standing room only at all of them. Also, we held in August a strategic planning retreat. This retreat was one of our ways, as a new board, to figure out how we were best going to work together, what were going to be our strategic priorities, and to also speak with other stakeholders in the community, such as Clayton State University, bringing them in to facilitate it, because we know one of our crown jewels is Clayton State University. The purpose of that retreat was to identify a new structure, speak about possible reorganization, and external benchmarking for a strategic plan. Also, as part of state law, all of our board members underwent the necessary training required by the state. And it was there that we all realized that in order to continue to move this county forward and move economic development forward, that we had to start embodying this new aggressive sales model. We have all of this great infrastructure. We are 20 minutes away from everywhere you want to travel in the world. How do we continue to promote and brand that general concept? In addition, one of the things that we have also revamped is our accounting procedures. So when coming into the office, we realized that there was an accountant of record that was being paid every month for accounting services. One of our action items is if we're going to continue to market our assets, we need to find a way to generate revenue and do cost-saving measures. So of that, we're now handling those accounting services in-house. Also, we have launched a national search for the executive director of the Economic Development Department to assist the county in their efforts. So to speak a little bit about our assets that we currently have as a development authority. At current, we have properties at 1630 Phoenix Boulevard, 260 Southfield Parkway, Harper Drive, 1885 Harper Drive, which is the Rainwood Apartments, Clayton State Boulevard, which is the university station in which we just recently approved an expansion deal. To give you some perspective as to what we have been able to do in combination with the economic development staff, I'll articulate some of the development projects over the year. We had the diversified utility service, a $1 million investment into the county with 200 new jobs. We had Clorox, $42 million investment with 85 new jobs. The Clayton County Commerce Center, a $38 million investment. We had Low Temp Industries, as I previously mentioned. Fresh Express, a $10 million investment with 20 new jobs. Kebabs, a $5 million investment with seven new jobs. Cummings Power South, a $10 million investment with seven, with eight new jobs, I'm sorry. Waste Eliminator, $7 million investment with 30 new jobs, to name a few. And I think we'd be remiss if we did not take time to thank the economic development staff for all of their work thus far. And I think they, it would be great to honor them with a round of applause. Further, I'm happy to report that the unemployment rate for Clayton County has dropped from 5.1% in September, I'm sorry, from 6.7% in September of 2016 to 5.1% in September of 2017. When we are looking at our strategic plans, we need to start revising our economic thinking to give full value to our natural resources. These revived economics will stabilize both the theory and the practice of free-market capitalism. It will provide business and public policy with a powerful new tool, which is economic development, profitability, and the promotion of the common good. In addition to our economic development operations, we have also been a feature county for film. Within the year of 2017, we have had a record number of film updates within our city. Those films include Baby Driver, featuring Jamie Foxx, Jon Hamm, Spider-Man, Logan Lucky, The Diary of the Wimping Kid, The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, featuring Winfrey. And we've also had a substantial amount of multiple television episodes filmed here in Clayton County, such as The Walking Dead, Stranger Things, which is a feature film on Netflix, MacGyver, Veiler, T.I. and Tiny, The Family Hustle, just to name a few. I stopped to say, we are a new board articulating a new strategic plan. And for us to continue to move all of these things forward, it takes all of us. One of the points that we brought out in our last meeting was that we need to do a better job as to articulating what it is, what are the assets that we have here in Clayton County. So our board unanimously approved to move forward with an external marketing plan, an external communication plan. I wholeheartedly believe that the success of the Development Authority will be key to the public people that we involve in that process. So what we're saying is our lines of communication are open. We're going to have a system by which, if there are comments from our public, we can get those and properly vet them. In addition, the highlight of our collaborative effort was the submittal of an RFP for Amazon. It was through many stakeholder meetings, it was through communications with state-level officials, i.e. our deputy governor of the state and other named officials, that were able to show you what we feel will be the next phase of Clayton County. And I hereby present to you for the first time the image of the Amazon site presented by Clayton County. So yes, there is work to be done. Yes, we stand girded by the support of the community. Yes, there will be hiccups along the way. However, with the support of everyone, with the support of our residents, with the support of our legislative body, we can continue to promote Clayton County in the way that it should have been done many years ago. Clayton County is a great place. We stand to say, we are Clayton proud. Yes, we are a new board, but we have work to do. And we ask that you, as a community, rally around all of the things that we're doing. And it's projects like Amazon, it's collaboration, such as what it took to get to the production of this video, that we will continue to be the number-one place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. About to have any questions for Mr. Clark?
I do.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Mr. Clark, you mentioned, well, one time you mentioned city, and it should have been county, so I recognize, that's okay. City all the time. But all of the films that you've mentioned that are being done here in Clayton County, you know, nobody knows about those things. You know, I'll mention it to somebody, and they say, "Oh, well, I didn't know that." So we need to do a better job of selling ourselves and letting people know. So I'm hoping that with your communication group that you hired...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but most of the films that are filmed, they have to do a nondisclosure, and they're not supposed to put the word out, because they don't want a lot of people coming to the show.
No, 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 after it's done, like you're doing now, right, like you're doing now. I don't mean before. Yeah, after the films have been done, then I think it's a good idea to let the public know that these things are going on in Clayton County. And I think it can only help. And one other thing I want to mention, I know you said the Development Authority was working on Amazon, but...
I apologize, Commissioner.
No, 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 I just want to mention that our colleague here took a very, very positive and hard-working role in getting that information out, you know, meeting with the high folk, the lieutenant governor and other people or whatever. I just think we should, you know, applaud him for taking that initiative and doing a good job on that. Mr. Edmondson, Commissioner Edmondson.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we hear the negative, I want to put the positive out there.
Absolutely. And first, to your point about the external communications, when speaking of a brand, when speaking of how do we properly articulate our message, it comes with more than just a fancy logo, a fancy website. It becomes a part of who you are, you know. So as we continue to build our board, continue to build that strategic plan, we understand that, yes, all of these great assets, all of these different film opportunities, we have to find a way to push that message out to our people. But again, it comes with this external plan involving our citizens in that process. And to your point with regards to Commissioner Edmondson, Chairman Edmondson, I know for a fact that Commissioner Edmondson went to meetings all across the state. He was able to get meetings, not on the phone, but with the lieutenant governor himself, to get the lieutenant governor to push this project, you know. So for that, I think it is, he should be commended for that. But again, that external communication, it takes a whole, it takes a whole community to rally around why we need to promote positivity and the great things that we're doing as a county.
Thank you, I agree, thank you.
Yes, I would just like to chime in with Commissioner Hambrich, because as a commissioner, many of you have known me maybe for 20 years. But I've had the blessing of being involved in the film industry as a young child. And I do have to chime in and state, you're exactly right. Where those agreements may state that you cannot disclose where they're being filmed at the time, I will tell you, I would not be where I am today if it had not been for where I grew up, those folks having a foresight to be able to say, "Hey, you're gonna film here, but you're gonna give back here." And so I think that there is opportunities for us as we move forward and we get comfortable in our roles, and they get more comfortable with us as a new site for filming, that we can get more of our students involved. We can get more of our community involved in the filming aspects of it, because we have a film school, we have a performing arts school, we have several performing arts schools. And I can't remember a time that I was not in a movie that was being filmed where I grew up in. So I'm looking forward to that. And I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna make me dance around this chair with the fact that you said, "We're gonna brand our county." I am so excited in that alone. So thank you so very much for bringing that to us and bringing that board together to make that happen. I still do have my reservations, but at the end of the day, we've got to move forward. Thank you so much.
And one thing I'll add to Commissioner Franklin Warner's point. A lot of times in these major communities, you have agreements, yes, you have your nondisclosures, but you also have agreements where that film entity has to have so many extras from the community, or they have to spend so many dollars at local businesses, or they have to stay at different hotels, motels within your county. So yes, and I think the way, to your point about the reservation, our hope and desire is that for the reservations that they may be, that this external communication policies help to settle some of that.
That would be great.
Open lines of communication.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other states? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I did just want to go back for the record and mention that the two zoning petitions that were removed, I did just want to mention the dates, that they will be listed again on the regular business meeting agenda, and that would be December 19th, 2017.
Yes, thank you.
Next aboard, we hear a presentation regarding House Bill 146. This is the firefighter cancer insurance, as presented by Epics. Could you please just state your name for the record as well?
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. I am James Ford, county executive with Epic Benefits Group. Thank you for having me this evening. I do want to give you a few highlights of our presentation, and we'll get that to you a little bit later on the House bill. Of course, the House bill is effective January 1st, 2018. Essentially, it provides monthly benefits and a single payout to firefighters who have been diagnosed with cancer. It is passed by the state of Georgia, so it is a requirement. What we've been doing over the past few weeks is analyzing the two carriers that are primarily in the market. One is via the ACCG through Hartford, and then our second is through Chubb, which was originally a part of the ACCG bid process, but did not win that bid, to get some comparable quotes for you. I'm trying to move quickly, because I know you all have questions.
Do you have that presentation to present to us electronically?
We will, yes.
They don't have it now, no.
Do you have a copy of it?
We can, I have my copy, Ms. Ambrose has a copy. You want my copy?
No, I'm gonna let you hold it.
Okay. We do have it electronically as well. I just want to give you the roundabout figures. The ACC and the Chubb are two comparable plans. The difference between the ACCG is that it includes some survivor benefits. So in the event that a firefighter passes on due to this cancer, then those benefits continue, of course, with the spouse. The Chubb option financially does not provide that. It provides a one-year rate, but it's a little bit cheaper, less expensive, I shouldn't say cheaper plan. My recommendation from Epic is moving forward with the Chubb plan, primarily because the market, there's no competition just yet in the market. The additional factors is that the long-term benefit that's included in this is often represented in your disability plan as well. But the disability carriers aren't playing well just yet to implement that. So we don't want you involved in a plan longer than a year, knowing that the market's gonna dictate change effective of the new year. And we did explore self-funding option as well. At this time, data doesn't support self-funding, so we don't want to recommend that. We don't want to put you all in extended financial risk, not knowing any predictive models that will help us determine risk going forward. And again, just to reiterate, both products are great products, great companies, longstanding companies, highly rated. Our recommendation is taking the cheaper option for the one year. Any questions, or without the presentation, any questions that you have?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You stated that Chubb seems to have the better option, because you're not tied into more than one year. But it's a disability policy, correct?
It has two quotes.
It has two portions of it, which is the cancer policy and the disability policy of it.
Got it, exactly.
And they're gonna be, is that a combined plan, or is it two separate policies?
It's one policy, and the policy has two options to it, or two benefits, as we refer to it. There's a lump sum, and then there's the income replacement. And both plans, off of that, both are compliant with the state bill.
Okay. And the other thing is, this is a group policy, correct?
Correct, it is a group policy.
So a group policy does not have a term generally more than a year. So whether we go with ACCG or Chubb, there's no requirement of us being with it longer than a year.
You're not bound, you can take the three-year option, if you want to take the three-year rate guarantee with ACCG. That doesn't bind you, that binds them to maintaining that three-year rate. Yes, ma'am.
Correct, that's what I was gonna state. So that's what I want to make sure that it's clear to this board, because when you stated it that way, it sounded as if we were gonna be locked in more than a year. Because you said you don't want us to take an option to be locked into a rate. But in this industry, that's not allowed. You can guarantee us a rate, but at the same token, we can change in two months if we wanted to.
To disability, that's right. And it's a very quick implementation, it's not drawn out like a medical plan, absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay. And so with that being the case, then what would be the reason, other than it being less expensive going with Chubb? And how much less expensive is it?
I'll give you the total numbers, and that's really the only differential.
I really would have liked to have seen this.
Yes, ma'am. And I do apologize for you not having it in advance. We do have it electronically, and we'll make sure you get it as quickly as possible. The annual rate on ACCG would give you $64,556. On a one-year rate for Chubb is $59,570. On a three-year rate with Chubb is $65,688. Now, these numbers are based on a census, based on the current firefighters that you have. Before any contracts are signed, we'll review that census again, because there's some rating that goes on with firefighters that work at multiple entities, et cetera.
Correct.
To make sure that's accurate, yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you this, but with the $64,000, that's through Hartford, correct?
That's ACCG through Hartford, correct.
Okay. They, we know their, I at least know their rate of customer service and filing the claims. Chubb, however, we don't. And Chubb, by pulling away from Chubb, then that means that your company would write it, as opposed to ACCG would write it, correct?
Hartford holds the paper.
But you, as the broker, you would be listed on the broker through Chubb, as opposed to being listed as the broker through ACCG.
That is correct, yep, very good.
So I'm gonna make sure I hear that, state that again. You're listed as the broker on Chubb versus ACCG, and your recommendation just now to us was to go with Chubb, because we wouldn't be locked into a rate past a year. But the industry does not allow that. By the state of Georgia, it's just a guaranteed rate, but we can leave in a month, two months, once things change in a year later.
The recommendation was on cost, because it was the least expensive cost, total cost.
Is there a compensation associated with being the broker of record?
There is. More so than that, my only concern is, and which I don't mind that as much, but I don't know the claims history with Chubb. And what we don't want to have happen is we offer a plan to our firefighters for a matter of less than a $5,000 difference that's being stated here, and then come to find out we have issues with getting their claims paid. The other challenge I have with the presentation, I don't know how the plans read exactly. I know that there are some guidelines with the state, but there are some exclusion points in there that may be different with Chubb. Whereas with ACCG, I know that it's been vetted. And I know that they definitely are following what's required, you would be required to follow it. But it just may satisfy the state, whereas with ACCG, I know that it's gonna be locked in, something that we can stand by. So I just wanted to state that.
FYI, Chubb is the number-two finalist behind Hartford. And if you like those additional support documents, I can certainly provide those.
Right. And there are other companies that are number one, number two, but the bottom line is, claim history is what I'm looking at.
Right, right, I agree.
And how fast they're paying those claims, whether they're gonna take our folks through. And for $5,000 difference, I don't know that that's worth it for us, but that's up to you all. But thank you so much.
Absolutely. So whatever your recommendation is, we'll take you through the next steps, again, your contract, any support documents that you need, we'll get it in your hands.
Well, let me make sure I state it. You owe us some more information, because I don't have an outline of coverage, I don't have anything to compare.
You need the full presentation that has those things, and you also want the support document that includes any exclusions that you need to see.
Yes, sir.
I absolutely have you, take it.
Thanks, thank you.
Make sure that all the commissioners get it. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have just to follow up. So Epic is the insurance broker to Clayton County.
Correct.
And as such, are you compensated by the county in that role?
Yes, now...
So we pay you to give us advice?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yep.
You're, you would be compensated, you would receive a commission on the product that you just recommended us.
Potentially. Now, let me just take one step back. As the county executive, I manage the relationship. I'm not a producer.
Your firm.
Right. I'm an account executive for, between the relationship with my firm and Clayton County.
Where's the producer?
So Epic, hold on, so Epic, so Epic is being paid to give us advice on insurance that they're getting a commission on?
On some products, yes, that's the broker relationship.
On the one that you just recommended, the Chubb.
Uh-huh, that's the broker relationship, yes.
Would you have received a commission on the other product, the Hartford?
ACCG is the entity that's broker, for lack of better words, yes.
So Epic would not receive a commission on the Hartford product?
Correct.
So we're paying you to give us advice, and your advice is to buy the product that you're getting a commission on versus the one that you're not getting a commission on?
Our recommendation is to take the least expensive option.
Were you gonna disclose the commission? Were you going to disclose the commission thing to us?
Um, I am almost certain that's fairly transparent in just the relationship that we have with you all, but it's certainly included in the full documents of the quote, if it's anywhere, which the Commissioner has asked us to provide. Absolutely, Commissioner. Absolutely. I thought there's another question?
As the HR Director, is it appropriate for me to
Hold on a second.
This is just the presentation.
I just want to know where the producer is, and that's the problem I've had for the longest. And I made no apology for stating, I work in this industry. I've had to apologize to about six people for missing some calls
Absolutely.
over the last month, because I've been from North Georgia all the way down to South Georgia.
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna tell you, as a producer, a licensed producer, I've not seen it to where they pull, bring in a relationship person
Right.
to present something, because are you a licensed, are you a licensed agent?
I'm a licensed and almost twenty-year veteran in health insurance.
Okay, I got you, sir. Okay.
Absolutely.
No problem. It's just when you make differentiate, differentiation between being a producer and not.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the Commissioner might have been implying that I was receiving some type of personal
No.
commission, and then I understand
Well, you represent Epic, and Epic's receiving a commission.
Yes, sir.
When I say you, I'm talking about the firm you represent before us.
Absolutely. And, and we need an account executive. I'm only public sector. We need an account executive to manage those relationships.
Gotcha.
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Please, I think Ms. Amboz had a question she wanted to ask you, so
All right.
before you leave, please.
Thank you so much, sir. Nice to meet you.
I just wanted to state that the purpose
No, I was saying, either approach, either approach to my
You gotta be recognized, Ms. Amboz.
Good evening.
Commissioners, the purpose of this presentation was to inform you of the, of House Bill one forty-six. Epic has presented us with two quotes, but we have not decided on a particular quote to bring back to you all in the form of a legislative request. So I'm, and, and I will say this too. I apologize for not getting the presentation to you all. That's not on Epic. That's on me, because I didn't get it over here in time. So we do have a presentation, and I'll make sure that you all get a copy of it. But we have not decided on a, on a, on a quote yet. When we do, we'll bring that back to the board with supporting documents in the form of an LR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we will consider the approval of our consent agenda. Are there any items that the Commissioners, any Commissioner would like to take out?
I want to take out F and G, Chairman, if I may, just separate those two.
Okay. Well, add F and G to the regular consent, I mean, regular agenda. And she's posing as a motion. I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
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 Oppose. She unanimous. Any others? All right, hearing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Warner, second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, we'll go to our regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to address the two items that were removed from the consent agenda first?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. That would be Carol Rogers, Central Services.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman.
Good evening.
Yes. Well, no, take them separate, I'm sorry.
Separate, okay.
You can take them together.
You want them together? Okay, take them together, please.
Okay. Great. Okay, the first one is recommendation for, is to renew the county's public entity excess liability insurance through Epic, which is the county's insurance broker and consultant. This is for the period of December the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, to December the thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Utilize an Aragonat Insurance Company, who is our current carrier. The premium is four hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars. The policy provides coverage for claims of bodily injury, property damage, public officials' liability, law enforcement liability, errors and omissions, employment practices liability, employee benefits liability, when the amount of the claim exceeds the county's self-insured retention level. Funding is available through the county's general fund, two thousand eighteen. Next item is the recommendation to renew the county's property and brawler machinery insurance through Epic Insurance Broker and Consultant for the period of January the first, two thousand eighteen, to January the first, two thousand nineteen. We will be utilizing Travelers Property Casualty Company of America, and they're our current carrier. The premium is two hundred seventeen thousand two hundred and two dollars. This policy provides insurance coverage on county-owned and leased buildings. There are contents, garaged, owned, and leased vehicles and equipment. Funding is available through the county's general fund, two thousand eighteen. I request you approve the recommendations, authorize the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Warner.
Let me just ask, just for the record, could you state that this, this portion of the company is separate from the portion of the company that deals with the major medical?
Right. This is, there's two, actually, this is a separate RFP than the one that's on the major medical. This is one for property and casualty.
So it's two different sides of the house? So you deal with some, you deal with a different, totally different department?
Right. And we do have a representative from Epic to discuss that as well.
Are you asking them to come up?
Do you want to come up?
No, I just wanted to, when you said that they were present. The reason being is because I just want to make sure that we're getting the level of service that we need and we deserve. Let me ask you another question. How long have we had them as our brokers?
This contract went out last year, two thousand sixteen, but before that, they were, they're McCart Group, and so it was the same service. So we, I think we had that contract since two thousand ten, if I'm not mistaken, with the McCart Group, who became Epic at some point.
Okay.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine. When is the last time we sent it out to bid?
Um, it went out for bid last year, two thousand
That's right. You did just say that. I apologize. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I do.
Mr. Amboz.
Is Epic the broker of record on either of these two policies? Agent of record?
Yes, we are the broker of record.
State your name for us, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Latoya Cotton with Epic Insurance Brokers and Consultants.
How much does Epic receive to give advice to the county on these policies or on this type of insurance?
We accept a broker fee, an annual broker fee, and right now, I think it's, did you want to know the dollar amount?
If you have it.
It's ninety-eight thousand five hundred.
We pay you ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars a year to give us advice on this insurance?
In addition to the remainder of the services that we provide to the county.
Okay. And what is the commission that you, that Epic is receiving on these two policies?
We don't receive any commission.
You just said that you are the broker or agent of these?
We accept a broker fee, a one-time broker fee annually. We don't accept commission on every policy.
There's no commission on these two policies?
No.
Okay, thank you.
If I could chime in, that's because that's separate from the major medical. That structure is totally different. So there's an additional forty thousand that Epic receives through the major medical brokerage contract.
I'm not sure how much their fee is, but they do get paid something different
And then they get the, and then they also get commissions on the major medical and any other contracts they have with us. But not necessarily major medical, but the other, the health and life, I should say, which is a totally different side of the house.
I'm not quite sure, but I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Nay.
Two, two, it goes nowhere.
Thank you.
The Board, we now consider the request of Director of Human Resources, Pamela Amboz.
Okay, hold on. What does this mean? I mean, are we without
Is the, no.
Is that inconclusive vote?
Uh, which, Ms. Rogers?
Come back to the Board.
You'd have to come back, either shoot it down or not. The question is, the, the question is, where do we stand currently, since there's a no vote on that?
Um, we're fine, but it actually expires out in December. So both of those policies. The first one would actually expire on December, the actual, December the thirty-first, and then the second one would expire on January the first.
Okay, so we have two meetings that we can address. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Amboz.
Thank you, Chairman. Human Resources is requesting renewal of our Medicare Advantage coverage with the incumbent provider, Aetna, Aetna. Human Resources presented information to the Board at the last Board meeting in regards to this request. This is a yearly contract that provides medical and pharmacy coverage to four hundred and twenty-five retirees. During the renewal period last year, our consultant was unable to find comparable coverage to, in regards to what we already have, in regards to coverage levels, as well as premiums. I would like to remind the Board that we did not experience a rate increase for this particular coverage last year. I also want to remind the Board that the rate increase is being driven by the mandate of the Affordable Care Act. The health insurance provider, the health insurance industry fee is what's providing this particular increase. Otherwise, there would not be an increase to this particular coverage. I, I cost, I chalk it up as the cost of doing business, the cost of offering this valuable coverage to our retirees. I do want to break it down for the Board just a little bit in regards to the numbers. I know I presented the numbers before, but I've done a little bit more breaking it down. The current yearly premium is one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. The proposed premium is one million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. There is a difference of two, of two thousand, well, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Once we apply the split, the contribution split of seventy-thirty, that leaves a cost to the county of two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I know there's some concern among the Board about increasing the premiums for the retirees. The retiree cost would be eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dol, uh, eighty-two dollars. Thanks to pooling, this particular cost is divided among the participants. So when you divide that particular number by four hundred and twenty-five, that comes out to be about two hundred and ten dollars a year, which equates to approximately eighteen dollars a month increase for the employees. Although the total increase is thirty-eight, sixty-one per retiree per month, when you apply the split, it averages out to be about an eighteen-dollar increase for them.
Okay, well, you just lost me.
Ms. Amboz?
Hold on, Commissioner Amboz. The question was, you said averages out to be eighteen dollars?
Mm-hmm. Per, per retiree.
So what's the thirty-eight, fifty-one figure?
Well, the thirty-eight, fifty-one is the total without the split. That's, that's just the total in general. So since we have the seventy-thirty split, seventy percent of that thirty-eight falls on us, and the other part, the thirty percent falls on the retirees.
I got you. Mr. Amboz?
Just making sure I understand, so when it says budgetary impact, the two ninety-seven, so it's before us here is the two ninety-seven to the county's budget, or is it the seventy percent to the county's budget?
That's going to be seventy percent once we apply the split. The two ninety-seven, nine forty-three, that's just the total. But once we apply the split, seventy percent of that belongs to us, which is the two hundred and eight thousand, five five nine. And then the retiree split, which is thirty percent of that, is the eighty-nine thousand, three eighty-two.
Conductor, seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear the, the motion in the second.
Right.
Oh, we didn't have a motion? We, we moved to All right. Is there a motion? I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing as it relates to prime healthcare management. Attorney Jack Hancock, if you would, please facilitate that hearing.
Chairman, Commissioners, the county received a request from Prime Healthcare Management, the owner of the hospital, that you conduct a Tefra hearing with regards to a bond, a bond issue that they are proposing. It is a multi-jurisdictional issue covering numbers of, a number of states. They are refinancing the debt on Southern Regional as a part of that. And because they're, they are a nonprofit, and because it will be a, therefore, a tax-exempt transaction, it requires a Tefra hearing be scheduled, and then after the hearing, an approval by you of them proceeding with that bond issue. So this is the hearing to, for anybody to have an opportunity to, to speak on that issue.
Okay, so is there anybody here to speak up on the prime healthcare management issue or matter?
Aye, I'm sure.
Come forward, Mr. Jerry Garber.
Mickey Garber?
Oh, Mickey, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Y'all brothers, so I was in the same
Yes, sir, we all look alike. As I understand this bond issue, and I've had several people help me in trying to understand it, I would like to say to the Board that I, as a citizen, give my approval for those bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak, for or against? All right, hearing, I'll entertain a motion to end the public hearing. I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and they would also need for a motion to authorize the issuance of the bonds as called for on the, in the agenda.
Is there a motion for the approval of the issuance of the bonds? I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
I have a question. Go ahead.
Mr. Amboz.
I just, Ms. Amboz. A motion where we don't need an actual resolution, or this counts as the resolution?
It does. Yes, sir.
No further questions?
Ms. Amboz.
Mr. Hancock, what liability does the county have? We don't have any liability.
No liability whatsoever.
I just don't want to get caught up?
Under the IRS code, because it's a tax-exempt bond issue, it requires the governing body to authorize it. That's all.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
I have another question.
Mr. Amboz.
Is there anything else we need to do between now and the end of the year on this issue?
Uh, it will come before you again on the December agenda, and the reason that it's, that, that is not normally what happens, but because our legal organ only publishes once a, a week now, because of the, their timing required, they needed this to move forward, but then they're going to have to do, will do the same thing on the December fifth meeting. That is just a quirk of the timing, that's all.
We good? All right, Mr. Amboz.
Sir. This Chairman, ordinance number two thousand seventeen seventy-nine is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia's amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages, Article Five, Operating Regulations, Section six one eight, business hours to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, provide severability, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes.
Take them all together, please.
All right, sir. And Resolution two thousand seventeen eighty is a resolution authorizing a third amendment of the purchase and sale agreement with Highwoods Realty Limited Partnership and North Carolina Limited Partnership to extend the due diligence period to authorize the Chairman to execute the amendment to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. As a matter of explanation, I'll be glad to, I don't know that all of you know what this is about, but, but I'll be glad to explain to you very briefly. We have an agreement with Highwoods to exchange some property. We are going to use the property, the county's going to use the property with, from them to construct, on which to construct a fire station in, in the area in the north part of the county. We are transferring to them in exchange for that some property, this old roadway and some, and an old fire station that hadn't been used in years. And in their due diligence, they determined that an adjoining property owner had constructed a fence across the property across the property that we own. And we gotta get that resolved and they, we're just extending the opportunity to do that, that's all.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, I have a question. On that, uh, Mr. Hancock, does that property include the building and all? Remember there was a, um, Mr. Buford, Shockly Buford had some property, well, was using.
That building's gone.
That, okay.
Yes, ma'am, that building's gone.
So it doesn't include in that land or anything?
Yes, ma'am, that land is part of it, where that old, where that old police fire station was, they're right on, yeah. That building's gone, but that is the land that we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, proceed on. Is that it?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Two other items, Mr. Chairman. I received an email shortly before the meeting, which our bond counsel requested that the Board call a special meeting on November the thirtieth at ten a, or, on November the thirtieth, and it's been suggested in my conversations with you that we do that at ten a.m. in the morning, in order to consider an issue relative to the refinance of the Ellenwood Tad. And we, we talked last week about, our last meeting about the expansion of that Tad area. In order to get that transaction closed by, before the bid prices expire, we'll need to call that special call meeting at that time, and then it will come up again in your December the fifth meeting. But, uh, we ask that you direct clerk to provide notice of that meeting.
All right, any Board member have a issue with the ten a.m. call meeting, special call meeting? Okay.
And then I'll need an executive session on litigation matters, please, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next we're gonna have appointment to the Library Board. Looks like we have three appointments. The first appointment to the Library Board is to fill the unexpired term of LaShonda Dillard. The term expires on February first, twenty nineteen. It's a full Board appointment. She resigned from that post. Are there any recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, there, can I ask that we hold that until the next meeting? There's a conversation with somebody who might be interested in that, but there's a scheduling conflict.
Is, uh, anybody else have nomination, or are you posing that as a motion?
I'm simply asking if we can hold it. If you've got someone, you can.
I have somebody.
Sorry, Dr. Anderson.
All right. Is that right? Okay, uh, I'd like to nominate Deidra Pointexter. Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. All right, second appointment is also to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Tom Macbeth. He also resigned.
She.
Oh, she, I'm sorry. The term expires on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Full Board appointment.
I'd like make a, make a motion for Mr. Lang. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Mr. Lang to serve.
What's the name, full name?
Uh, he's gonna get me.
Well, just as long as we have it, as long as we get it to the clerk.
Okay.
She doesn't really have to have the whole name.
I have, okay.
All right, give me the name again.
It's Mr. Lang. He's a retired Colonel.
Is there a second on it?
Second.
All right, those in favor, aye? Oppose, it's unanimous. All right, last Board appointment is to, also to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Tanisha Hamilton. Non-attendance. The term expires on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, full Board appointment. Are there any recommendations? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation. Donna Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Madam Clerk?
The last three items are zoning petitions. The first, the applicant is Carbra Tarneunen, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a personal care home having six or more persons. The subject property is located at eleven eighty Mondays Mill Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, have recommended approval with conditions. This is District Three, Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is the petitioner present?
Please come forward, take the poll down, please.
We will. The Board will hear from the petitioner first, and then anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this zoning petition.
Please state your name.
Suzanne Toya.
Copy it, Tarneun.
Please. State your case or what your request is.
Well, we're requesting to be permitted to get a conditional use permit so that we can be able to increase our capacity.
Okay. And you're, how long have you been, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How long have you been operating under the state?
Been operating since June of two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen. And I know that normally you all are regulated by the state, but I have to be forthright. And in particular, as a new Commissioner, I have been inundated with a number of concerns by people that, people that have concerns about the type of homes. And I know you're probably offering a wonderful service, and I thank you all for coming before us and doing it the right way. So my question is, how can we assure that the level of service from a county standpoint is gonna be provided and it's not gonna be a nuisance to the community? Because you're really regulated by the state, there's not much that we can do. I don't know if maybe the evaluation can be submitted to the county, maybe something we need to ask our attorney. But I just want to make sure that Clayton County doesn't end up on the news with homes. And that's my honest concern, because you know this has been something that has been hit. We've been hit by, not necessarily in the county, but in particular throughout the state of Georgia. And so this is a concern of mine.
Okay, well, I can definitely appreciate your concern. Our number one priority is to make sure that each resident in the house is provided with a safe environment and that all of their basic needs are met. And that's the reason why they're there. So we, just by the last meeting we had with Zach, we had one of the Board members that came by to take just a look around, and he visited the property and saw the level of service that we provide, the, um, the environment that we keep our resident in. And each of our, excuse me, each of our employees, including myself and my husband, we are well-trained, we're also well-experienced, um, in this field as well.
And what clientele do you serve? What age of the clientele?
Seniors, the youngest is about fifty-four and the oldest is seventy-six.
Okay. And is it mainly health needs or mental?
It's mostly, it's actually a mix of both. Because what we do is we are there to assist them with their daily, daily needs as far as the grooming, their medication management, all of those things that are also regulated by the state as well. And we also provide services like day program, take them out on social outings, things like that.
Okay.
Says here that your, the home sits on approximately five acres, is that correct?
Actually, we did a, um, a survey, we actually paid to get a survey done on the seventh of August, and it actually sits on six point two seven five acres.
Six point two seven five. All right, and obviously if you've been working, um, having a home for, since twenty, two thousand?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, then the state's been out to regulate.
Yes, and we passed.
That you are in compliance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioners? All right, so is there anybody here who want to speak for or against this request? Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Okay.
Let me ask you a question, probably is a Kimberly question. And it might be because I'm a rookie.
Ms. Smith.
The plans would have to, they've already been, I've looked at the information submitted, but would detail, more detailed plans be submitted for approval, or would they just be able to just expand? So you're not gonna expand the home, you're just gonna get more people?
Well, the, the home has additional two rooms that was vacant, and what we did were remodel those rooms so that they are, um, more accessible for the residents that we, um, clientele that we work to us, um, like wheelchair-accessible ramps, we did all of that. So the, the house, we did add on to the house, the rooms were already there.
What's the total square footage of the home?
By twenty, two thousand, right about twenty-one hundred.
You have how many currently in there?
We have five.
And you wanted it? You wanted to go to ten in the current home?
Yes, and recently the Fire Marshal came by to do like a courtesy inspection, and he was able to walk around as well and give us, um, give us a report that the home does meet that the state actually exceed the state requirement per square footish, per each resident. And we have a full plan if you guys, if you all want to take a look at it as well.
Okay.
Do you have what?
A full floor plan of the house.
You want to see the floor, floor plan? All right, you have a question for Ms. Matthews there?
And he just asked about the floor plan. I'm good on twenty-one hundred square foot home, I'm pretty much, I'm very familiar with your land, your property, I drive by it all the time. And I went to visit it, and I just want to thank you for what you all are doing. I commend you for what you're doing. Um, and maybe.
You got a recommendation?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna recommend that we deny it at this time. And we just have to revisit and maybe, the number of, you know, with the acreage that you have, it may be something you can expand. But unfortunately, with twenty-one hundred square feet, I, I honestly cannot, um, cannot go along with that, so I'm gonna make a recommendation to deny it.
Wait till it's called. Is there a second, Mr. Ambrose?
Second. I hope we technically have to wait for the call of a second, but sure, if there's a second.
I'm trying to keep things in order, if you don't mind.
Can I, um?
Hold on a second, ma'am. Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. You have a last statement, I'll allow you to make a statement.
And I want to make sure you understand too, that that means it's denied at this time, with the current square footage.
That's correct. The motion was denied, and it was unanimous.
Okay. I guess my question, well, what exactly do we need to do? Because per the state requirement and the county and the Fire Marshal, we do have the capacity to hold the amount of people that we're requesting.
Yeah, we can talk offline, but you gotta remember, at the end of the day, the state is the one that comes in and regulates you all. But we're the ones that deal with, you know, the residents who call and have the concerns. And in my conscious, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, I live in a home of that square footage. It's six people in my house, including my little children, and the house is still too small. So it's very difficult for me to seat ten people in a twenty-one hundred square foot home, regardless of the state approval. And that's just a little bit added. So you got the footage square, you got the acreage, maybe you can look at expanding, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next zoning petition, the applicant is James McLennan, the fourth. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a car wash. The subject property is located at twenty-three oh one Mount Zion Parkway, Morrow, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, have recommended approval. This is District Four, Vice Chairman Emerson's district.
Mr. Chairman?
The petition.
Okay, let the petitioner state his name, and then I'll address Mr. Emerson.
James Ralph McLellan, the fourth.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Emerson.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We would want to hear from the.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's right. Is there anybody here for or against this petition? Anybody here for or against who would like to speak? All right, Mr. Emerson.
Motion made and seconded.
Yeah. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
And the last zoning petition for this evening, the applicant is George Harper, on behalf of Skyview Media, Inc. The request is for, uh, the request is to allow for residential subdivision. The subject property is located at zero Chapel Lane, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, have recommended approval with conditions. This is District Three, Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is the petitioner present? Please come forward. After the petitioner, anyone that is present that wants to speak in favor or against this zoning petition, will have the opportunity to do so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. George Harper, Paramount Engineering, eleven East Broad Street, Noonan, Georgia. Uh, I'm here representing Skyview Media this evening, uh, for the Phase Two at Lakes at Mondays Mill subdivision. Uh, this property has, uh, kind of been around a while. We actually developed this property back in two thousand and five. All of the streets, uh, were put in sanitary sewer, water lines, curb gutter, retention ponds, the whole like. And due to the economy, only Phase One was developed at that time. In the meantime, uh, the zoning regulations of the county changed. We originally zoned a conservation subdivision, and in two thousand and eight, they did away with that sort of, that zoning. And so fortunately now, uh, with your new zoning regulations, we actually fall back into a conservation zoning, which is exactly what this was developed as. Based on the conservation zoning, uh, and, and the county's new rezoning rules, we are allowed a six thousand square foot lots. We're actually doing seven thousand square foot lots to match, uh, Phase One. This, Phase One of this subdivision was done very nicely. The homes are very, very nice, uh, very, uh, masonry fronts, uh, brick, stone. And so we want to, uh, match those houses in Phase Two, along with the size of those houses in Phase One. We have met with the Homeowner Association of Phase One, going back two years or more now, many, many times. And have, uh, have, have had many conversations, discussions with them on their concerns, um, about, uh, about our development. And, uh, this, this property was developed initially without a, a amenity. Back then, that was not required. And we have, uh, heard the concerns of the Phase One property homeowners, the Homeowner Association, and that was one of their main concerns, is they wanted an amenity. And hearing, you know, the, the complaints from Stony Creek tonight, I, I can understand that. And a, and a development of that size probably does need that. And so we have conceded to, uh, to build a clubhouse for them. They had some concerns, they wanted a horseshoe pit and, and three pavilions and that type thing. And we have agreed to do all of those things. And so, uh, you know, we feel like we have really, uh, tried to reach out to them, be a very good neighbor to them, and hear their concerns, and, and Mr. Cox, I will speak in just a minute, he came up here, but, uh, but we've, we've worked with him quite a bit. And, uh, we feel like, uh, he supported us at the ZAG meeting, and so we hope he, uh, will do that again tonight. But, uh, but we have heard their concerns and, uh, and are willing to, to meet those. So if you have any questions, you know, we, we are above the required forty percent open space, we're at forty-seven percent. If you do a, uh, a yield plan with an RS one eighty, we're allowed ninety-nine lots, we're only doing ninety-two. The original plan had about, uh, I think closer to a hundred in this phase, and we're actually taking some of those out just to make it, uh, and add a few detention ponds and make the site a little bit better. So, um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it, or I'll reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
All right, any questions for Mr. Harper? Any questions? Any questions? From, from the Board members?
I want to hear from this, from the residents first. I just want to say, this was one of the many subdivisions or builder, or, um, developers I've met with since coming on board. And we've met several times, so I'm just glad to see y'all get to this point. And, um, I just want to be able to hear from the residents and their final say. And thank you for meeting and listening to the residents.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll call for anybody who wants to speak for or against, for this, uh, petition.
Chairman, Commissioners, we'll try this again. Name's Alonso Cox, live at ninety-eight fifty-one Chappelle Lane, Jonesboro, Georgia. Okay, on behalf of the Lake at Mondays Mill, the zoning was approved through the zoning board conditionally. I have a couple of questions pertaining to those, uh, conditions. The first one would be, uh, the walking trail, will it be a connected walk? The first one would be, uh, the walking trail, will it be a connected walking trail? Next thing, will the spacing of the lights be for the, uh, walking trail? And the Phase Two of the subdivision be within one hundred feet, two hundred feet, whatever? Because at the moment, in Phase One, the spacing is about three hundred, if not four hundred feet apart. So you have dark areas in between the spacing of the lights. Okay, uh, also, in the zoning proposal, was for benches on the walking trail. And we were considering, wanted to know where would the benches be placed, and the spacing also on those benches. Also, if we can have all of the conditions met prior to them building the first home, that way we know that we're gonna get what we asked for.
Okay, so, are you finished, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Trash cans. It was not to miss, mention about trash cans. We wanted to know if the builder was willing to, uh, put in trash cans also, on, along the walking trail.
Now, I understand that you met, the subdivision met with the builder, did y'all not discuss it at that time?
We discussed everything except for trash cans, that didn't come up until it came to me afterwards.
So what was their response to the previous items that you requested?
I, I had met with him on these items here, as far as the spacing, no, that's why I was bringing it up now.
Okay, alright, well, the only one that can answer that is Mr. Harper, so if Mr. Harper would take the podium again.
Alrighty, uh, in regards to the walking trail, yeah, uh, it will be connected, as we have shown on the plan that, that you guys see, uh, and that we submitted for review. It does circulate back around the proposed clubhouse, I've got a couple of here. Sorry.
I have it here as well, electronically.
It does circulate back around near the clubhouse, and then connects back to, uh, the streets, uh, Flag Court, up further along. So we'll kind of meander around, um, more in the, uh, open space area, and, uh, that area is pretty wooded right now. Yes, it will be connected. Uh, the lights and spacing, I'm not sure, are you talking about along the trail or along the street?
Along the trail, and along the street in Phase Two.
Okay, typically, the, the way that will work is, is that, uh, we'll have an agreement with, uh, or the Homeowners Association actually would end up having an agreement with Georgia Power, they would probably furnish the lights. They typically do the, uh, spacing, they'll do the lighting plan and the spacing on those lights. And so that's not really something that, uh, we would-
But according to the conditions, you guys will be responsible for the lights.
Yeah, we, we said that we would put the lights in, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that, again, we'll deal with Georgia Power, who will actually put those in, and they'll, they will typically do the lighting plan and install those.
Okay, what about the, uh, benches?
Uh, yes, we will, we will provide benches, as we stated, uh, in our last meeting, along the trail. Um, just looking at the trail, I think it's, I'd say it's five hundred feet long, you know, we'd probably put, say, three benches, I mean, I, I, you know, we, we'd be glad to submit a plan to the zoning administrator to let her review it prior to approval, if, on a couple of these items, if that would suffice.
And I apologize, we were discussing about what needed to go before Kimberly's, um, Ms. Smith's office. Could you repeat your last statement, please? The last thing you just said, could you repeat it?
Yeah, it was about, I, I, I just asked that, on a couple of these items like this, could it, could we submit a plan to the zoning administrator for review prior to approval? You know, like the benches or the lighting spacing or those type things.
Are you asking to put off the hearing?
No, no, I mean, we're, we're gonna provide them, we just, I mean, I, I don't, am I gonna stand up here and say, we'll put five benches out there, if that's what we want to hear, then we'll put five benches out there. I'm just looking at the spacing, I don't, I don't exactly remember how long that trail is right now, so.
Well, see, the app, some people's apprehension is, we approve it, and then you don't do what you suppose, what you say you're gonna do, so that can be problematic.
Okay, I mean, we'll put-
So we, they're needy, well, I'm not gonna speak for-
Oh, you go right ahead, you the chair.
But, uh, you know, we have to look out for the best interest of those.
Sure, I understand, and, and believe me, that's not our intent at all, I mean, I, I, I just hate to say we need, we'll put three benches and five is more appropriate, so.
Oh, you can always put more out there, just give us a minimum number that, that they're gonna be happy with, and I think-
Alright, uh, I think that, I think the trail is somewhere around five to six hundred feet long, so every couple hundred feet, how about three benches, will that, that suffice? Because we've already got the clubhouse, pavilions, horseshoe pits, playgrounds.
Let me say this though, and I might be out of order on this part. We have come a long way with this project, and I'm addressing this specifically to y'all, because when I tell you I'd have met you at Wendy's, I don't know how many times, and y'all, we had residents who weren't at the meetings, then all of a sudden show up, and we start from the beginning. What I don't want us to see is that we get to a point to where we allow one thing to hang us up with all that you've gotten, because I'm gonna tell you, when we first met, the, the, the only thing that was in there was the clubhouse, none of the other amenities were ever even mentioned. So I'm just pleased that, to see you all get that and other things. So I do think that we need some benches there, um, but I do want to make sure that we get it on record, that you all are gonna do what you say you're gonna do, that we're able to hold you accountable for the residents. But I also want us to move forward and not continue to go back and forth on three, five, because then that's, you know, it's kind of, I, I don't know, if it's a walking trail, then we either gonna walk or we gonna sit down. So we gotta decide which one we gonna do, because y'all, you know, because you got, what I'm, what I'm really excited about are the pavilions. I mean, that lit me up, because you're gonna have a community with pavilions in it, that's gonna be absolutely amazing. And then I do have to agree though, that the lighting is a concern. We want to make sure that you, that, that lighting is gonna be where it needs to be, whether it involves Georgia Power or you all. So we do, that's very, very important. But on the benches, I'm just gonna tell you, y'all might get upset with me, but we've come a long way. I, I, I think we can walk six hundred feet without a whole lot of benches. So, but we can, let's see if we can get to an agreement or something, can we do four?
Four is fine, four is fine.
Alright, we got it, woo!
Didn't agree to it. Alright.
One last thing.
Go ahead, sir.
As far as the playground, we want to be able to look at the playground to make sure we want, we're not like, uh, Stony Creek.
Okay.
Well, well, you know that Commissioner Franklin Warner gonna make sure that playground's not like Stony Creek.
And the main thing as far as the playground is safety for the kids.
Yes.
Make sure the foundation is safe. Other than that, I think we're good.
Appreciate it.
Old house special. It's been a while, this, this has been quite a process.
Since May of twenty fifteen, I believe.
I believe it has, yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Now this I do.
There we go, there we go.
Alright, is there anything else you want?
Uh, I believe we answered about everything, trash cans.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah, hold on, just let him finish, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
We'll provide trash cans around the, the, uh, pavilions and the- Clubhouse. Four trash cans. To match the benches.
Alright, he said four trash cans.
Four trash can and four benches, that's the magic number.
Alright, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come forward, please. You can come on up and be ready for next, ma'am.
Hi, Twana Hudson, one zero zero three one Cormac Street, in Lakes and Mondays Mill. Um, my question is, do you, do they know who the builder's gonna be, that's the first? Because it's, just because we, they're the owners of the property, but we don't know who the builder is. The builder could come in and say, I might, I know it's conditional, but the build, I don't know the position the builder's gonna have when they come in. And I want them to make sure that whoever come in to build, that they're coming in and saying, hey, this is the conditions before we start building. And I, again, as Mr. Cox said, we don't want to end up like Stony Crest, that we're not getting what we want, sorry if I said it wrong, if we're not getting what we want, because we come into agreement with everything, you know, you're doing.
I think that would be part of what, um, Kimberly, can you address that and how that works? With, um, the fact that if we approve this tonight or not approve it however it goes, how do we assure or ensure that the, um, mandates are, are met by the potential builder?
Um, when an application comes in for site development for a residential subdivision, there are a string of, uh, meetings that they have to go through. Um, one of the meetings is a technical review committee meeting, um, where that body of people have the authority to approve or deny or to, um, defer the site plan, and they must adhere to all zoning conditions, or it will be denied. Um, and at that time, they would have the opportunity to submit a modification to a condition of zoning, and there will be public notice, and you all will be notified and have the opportunity to speak on it.
Even after they approve it?
Um, any rezoning application, you have the opportunity, the applicant or property owner has the opportunity to come forward to the board to petition them for changes, if it's, if that's their will.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, please.
My name is Barbara Kendricks, and two years ago, um, I was called to come up front of the board. Where my home sat at, um, twelve twenty Toluway Court, it was, uh, Assets Row. So I was just trying to figure out how, in this plan where my home sat at, how would they work this out?
Okay.
Mr. Harper?
I don't have a map of the Phase One, we were just-
I think I know which row, because we drove that property.
What was it, what, what's your address?
Twelve twenty Toluway Court.
Uh, so you must be way up here in Phase One then, because it, there's only, the, uh, only street that comes back is Cormac Street, that served Phase Two. So, uh, that, that street is up here in Phase One, so we're completely in the back of the neighborhood.
So, okay, so the Assets Row where from my house sitting where the part, because I sit out my, my kitchen, um, out the bathroom for my back bedroom, and I look at these lights and all these lights, so. Um, when I said, uh, the first meeting two years ago, um, the property was, um, the Assets Row. So I'm trying to see what at, what, what were, um, once you get it all built and everything and everything, where, where would they come out at Monday Mill, uh, what's the exit plan?
Out of the main, uh, entrance and exit out of Monday, the Lakes and Mondays Mill right now. We're not building any new additional roads, all the roads in the subdivision are actually already constructed.
Okay, so that Monday Mill that come, the exit out on Monday Mill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, you good, okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I would.
Come on up, Mr. Garber.
Mickey Garber.
Uh, Mr. Garber, we were leaving off.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. And my comments are to these fine people who are requesting gar- garbage cans, be careful of what you ask for. Who is gonna empty these garbage cans? Somebody in the community, this is there to keep the community clean, but somebody has to take the responsibility for emptying the cans, because let me tell you what happens, I've got cans out in a homeowner's situation. They have to be emptied once a week. You have to be careful about people using that convenience for tissues, this and that, of putting their home garbage, home use into those garbage cans, and an added burden onto their convenience situation. Also, the liners in those cans hold water, the reason they have to be emptied once a week, because holding water, the garbage gets wet and attracts insects and mosquitoes. So everybody take everything into their mind and use your brains, thank you.
Is there anybody else? I hear no one else, uh, Commissioner Warner, you have a recommendation?
I make a recommendation that we approve the, um, zoning petition with all stated items, including the four benches and the four trash cans that will be emptied and the liners will be changed by the HOA.
I'll second the motion. I'll wait it.
Could, could we have Ms. Smith read into the record all the stipulations that were-
Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Um, the first condition, the applicant shall revise landscape and tree plan that complies with planning and landscape requirements and identifies common space ownership and management. Condition number two, the applicant shall clear cut, shall not clear cut lots adjacent to the stream buffer and shall work with auboris for tree saving of existing mature trees located in common areas, buffers, and required landscape strips. Condition number three, architectural design materials and quality shall meet or exceed that of Phase One. Condition number four, the builder shall agree to build minimum size twenty-five hundred square foot homes. Condition number five, lots are to be a minimum of seven thousand square feet in size. The community requests that the common areas be deeded to the HOA after eighty percent of the entire subdivision, including Phase One and Souls. The community's request that there be one clubhouse, three pavilions built for community use. The large pavilion will be twenty by twenty, while the other two pavilions will be fifteen by fifteen in size. All pavilions will have cement floors, metal beams, metal roof, multiple electrical outlets. All pavilions will have charcoal grill placed to the rear. The clubhouse will include two offices, both with no windows, enclosed kitchen with a counter for, to separate from common area, storage space, male, female, unisex bathrooms, multiple electrical outlets. The clubhouse shall be able to accommodate sixty people. The proposed renderings provided by C, by Crown D.R. Horton may be referenced and modified. The community requests, uh, the species of flowers and shrubs will be planted in the common area. Let me restate that. The, the builder shall provide the species of flowers and shrubs that would be planted in the common area. The developer shall provide continuous sidewalks throughout the community, and the developer shall provide an amphitheater to be built as part of the clubhouse, that actually, please strike that, that was not to be included. Um, and the community and the, uh, builder shall provide a walking trail. And then the last ones that were added on this evening, there shall be at least four trash cans on site, as well as four benches on the walking trail. And there shall also be lighting, which will be coordinated between the developer and Georgia Power. And if you could also, um, condition it that the, um, approval is based on the site plan submitted to our office and approved or recommended for approval by Zag dated November sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
No, sir. By Ray got a motion on the table. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, builder, Mr. Harper.
Yes, those are, uh, all the, uh, stipulations that we did agree to.
Okay, I think we have a motion to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And can we please convene so that you all can make sure that Kimberly read everything exactly the way it was written? Because I, we have it up here written, you all, she was just reading it. So if there's something that was read in error, we will get it corrected, no worries. Did we need to vote again?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, that concludes, I believe, our decisions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude this evening's agenda. Uh, there was a request, if there is no further business to discuss, to go into executive session on litigation. May we have a motion to go into executive session on litigation?
Okay, is there a motion going to the executives, this, executive session? I'll make the motions, there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous, thank you.
Agreement released between the county and Ronald Lynn Brown Quality Carriers, Inc., Quality Distribution, QC of Georgia, Inc., and Zurich, Zurich American Insurance Company. In this settlement, the county received thirty-eight thousand dollars from the defendants as a result of damage to a county vehicle and an automobile, or county fire truck in an automobile collision. We have the money, uh, and, uh, have tendered that to the finance director, and you just need to sign the, uh, release.
Your motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, statements, questions, hearing, uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye. And Stuart Lang, was that name, Chairman? I apologize.
Stuart Lang, you got that Madam Clerk. All right, motion to adjourn. I'll make the motions, there a second?
So moved.
Second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Good night, good night.